Wait a second. Can we stand up, pledge allegiance?
Hold, hold, hold it.
Oh, he just said he was ready.
No, I thought you were doing a sound check.
Oh, okay.
You're online, man.
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna open the Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting. Can we please stand up, pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have anyone for public comment. Bill, do you mind reading the approved, the warrants?
Not at all. Uh, motion to approve payroll warrant dash twenty dash zero seven in the amount of one hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and three cents.
Seconded. Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant twenty dash zero seven in the amount of four hundred ninety-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars, which breaks down as follows. Town eighty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Water and sewer nineteen thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. Payroll holding sixty-two hundred thirty-seven dollars and two cents. Light bills three hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars. And grants revolving seven thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and four cents.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Um, we have to approve the minutes from the July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen meeting.
So moved.
I'll second that. It looked to be in order.
Okay. No other further discussion on that? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we have the appointment of Melissa Baker of Five Sunset Circle to the Finance Board through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Well, thank, thank you for stepping up to such an important board. We definitely need some people there, so I'm sure you'll like working there and, you know, I hope you can help us out.
Absolutely.
Does anyone have anything you want to say to Melissa?
Well, thanks for volunteering. We have a hard time getting people to volunteer for things, and I know you tried a couple of years ago, or you wanted to when you first moved here.
I had an interest when I first moved, um, to the town two years ago, um, but when I moved here, I had newborn twins, um, and decided to get past that stage and then revisit the volunteer opportunity.
Well, we're glad you're back.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add?
No, I'm welcoming Melissa to the board. Um, she's got a strong financial background, and I'm sure she'll, she'll be a real asset to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for stepping up. We never have enough volunteers for anything, so, um, if you know any friends that'd like to get on the committee, please ask them. And we've had a number of other committees and boards that, uh, need to be filled as well, so if you know anybody that wants to get involved and don't mind rolling up their sleeves and doing a little dirty work every now and then, it would be great.
Okay, so can I get a motion for, um, Melissa?
Um, I'll make the motion to appoint Melissa Baker to the Finance Board.
I get a second?
Effective, uh, uh, tomorrow through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Seconded.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, um, we're gonna do the discussion and possible vote. We have the interim fire chief discussion. Accept the resignation from Ri- Richard York as interim chief effective midnight on August thirty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.
I know he was planning on being here, and they did go out on a call just before, uh, six o'clock. Maybe he'll, maybe he'll be here shortly.
I'll move to accept the resignation. He, um, I'll make the motion. Get a second for discussion purposes?
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion?
Um, yes, I wanted to, um, thank, um, Richard York for, for his service. It's, he said in his letter that his work hours have been extended, making it impossible for him to continue as the interim. You know, I would have liked him, him to be able to continue until we hired the permanent, but we will have to make some kind of an, um, in-between move to bridge that gap, so.
Okay.
Wish him well in his work.
Okay, so that was the motion?
Yep.
Anyone got a second?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
And then further discussion?
Yeah, one thing.
Sure. I, I just want to echo what Kathy said about, uh, Mr. York. He did a great job in the interim role. Uh, I think his leadership was well-known in the department, and thank him for stepping up and taking the reins for as long as he could. That's it.
All right, so any further discussion? Go ahead.
I, I wasn't sure. I know that you've had an interim chief before, but your practice to, um, have a letter sent, um, thanking them for that type of service. It'll, it is above and beyond.
Sure.
So, um, I'd like to include that in the.
Okay, and can we make a note to send them a thank you letter from the board, please? Maybe we, I don't know if you want to just, we don't have to all sign it. I think it, we make it from the board, that would be good enough.
And the chairman signs it, yes.
Yep, okay. All right, yeah, no, I, I think it was very nice of him to step up, and I know someone before him had stepped up, and I think it's unfortunate this has rolled the way it's rolled, and we're now two years down the road, and we still don't have anyone, but at least we had these guys to step up and do their, um, due diligence and help us out. So, again, I would definitely like to thank Richard for his time, and, um, hopefully we can get this thing taken care of sooner than later. So that being said, I need to get a vote, um, for his resignation. All in favor?
Reluctantly.
Okay, so now we're gonna talk about the interim position going forward.
I was hoping that he would be here and have a suggestion for an interim. I, I still expect him to show up. Hopefully he's got somebody in mind that, that can step up and, uh, temporarily take over till, uh, we get a full-time person on board.
Well, I know that I had.
I was gonna ask if you would allow a motion to be made so we could have a discussion period on this.
I'm sure.
So.
Make a motion to have a discussion period?
No, 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 I was going to make a motion of appoint, an appointment motion and request a second, and then we can discuss. Unless you want to just have an open discussion without a motion. I thought normally you would have a, a motion second before.
Well, it's on the, it's on the agenda for the interim position going forward. Is that what we're gonna talk about now?
Yes.
It's on the agenda, so I don't think we need to have a motion. It's on the agenda to talk about it, so I think we're good to go there.
Okay, so I was gonna say, when you're ready, I, I have a motion for a possible vote.
Okay, um, I forgot what I was gonna say now. Um, interim position, so, okay, I know what I was gonna say. So, I was talking to Denise before she went on vacation, and she had told me there's five applicants right now for the Fire Department, and the committee of the fire chiefs that are out there have made a suggestion to her to give us all five applicants, to let us review them. I believe two of them are very strong, three of them may not be, but that's for us to read and discuss. So, um, I think when she gets back, she'll be discussing that with us further. And then somebody else had made a, a discussion about possibly joining with, um, Georgetown and sharing a chief. So, again, that will be discussed, I think, when she gets back.
Okay.
So that being said, if you want to go ahead, Kathy?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jeffrey Gillen to serve as the interim Public Safety Chief, pending successful negotiations until such time as we complete the process to hire a fire chief.
So that's a motion to appoint him tonight? I'll just have discussion?
Pending successful negotiations. We can't just appoint him. We'd have to meet with him and discuss.
I understand that, but shouldn't we have discussion ahead of time about if, let the board discuss it?
That's what my motion is. If someone seconds it, then it's up for discussion, and then I can share with you what I, why I may.
Okay, he's, Mike's seconded it.
Okay, so then I can explain. So, um, just in a few minutes, it, as Denise informed us, there are five candidates for the fire chief role. The screening committee is moving ahead with preliminary interviews in early September, so we're on a path to, to get our fire chief in place. We have had two different interns from, from within the Fire Department, and it just seemed to me that at this juncture, it would be best for, for all concerned, for public safety, for everything, for the members of our Fire Department to remain in place, since we're so close to completing this process. And my understanding, I asked some preliminary questions of Denise about whether or not this was something that was viable and doable legally and everything, and my understanding is that it is. The only, the only thing that we would need to do would be to schedule an executive session negotiation in order to discuss, um, compensation for that interim role. And again, I stress again, this is an interim role. It's not creating a different job or anything like that.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
You're gonna need a, a, Public Safety Director is fine, but you need a fire chief. And, uh, you need somebody to serve as a fire chief, and you're, you're talking about a Public Safety Director. If you have somebody that's a Public Safety Director, you still need a, a person, uh, as a fire chief.
And, and again, I'll respond that this has been checked through Town Council and as an interim measure. Whether you want to call, um, Jeffrey Gillen the Police Chief slash interim Fire Chief, fine, change the name. I'm trying to do it with one name. If, you could do it either which way, it's, it's fine by me. It's an, it's an interim administrator of the Fire Department, and we would still have in place our Assistant Fire Chief and two, um, captains, all of which are highly qualified and able to, um, run the department, because they actually have been running the department. So, to me, this makes the most sense right now, where we're already almost to September, and this preliminary interviews are scheduled for September. So this would be the least disruptive and hopefully, um, the smoothest way to transition through the next few months.
Okay, Mike?
Uh, yeah, I see the point, because after the thirty-first, we have no chief or interim chief or acting chief for the Fire Department, so we need to have something to bridge that gap, um, whether it's a Public Safety Director or an appointment of another chief, a fire chief or an interim chief. Something has to be done to bridge the gap between the thirty-first and whenever we hire or present a contract or negotiate a contract, however long that takes, something has to be done to bridge that time period, whether it's a week, a month, three months, whatever that comes out to be, something has to be in place.
And again, I just, if Ed's only objection is to the name change, I'm, I'm more than happy with a friendly amendment to go, to move the, uh, motion to appoint Jeff Gillen as the Police Chief slash interim Fire Chief, if, if that satisfies, if that feels more comfortable. Either way, I'm open. Either name is legal.
I'd like to see, to see it held off until, uh, we can speak with the President interim Fire Chief and see if he has, uh, somebody in mind from the Fire Service that, uh, would temporarily step into that role, uh, for, for a couple of months, till we get somebody on board. And it may not take that long. We talk, probably talk in the end of September, maybe, uh, schedule some interviews, and, uh, maybe there's somebody within the Fire Service that'll step up. They, they have, they have, we've had two people step up so far, and it become, uh, tough for them with their job, and maybe there's somebody within the service that will step up and serve in that role.
Okay, I'll talk. So, um, I'll give you.
I like to suck it all in.
Okay, all right, so, number one, I don't have a problem having a director, say, for administration reasons.
Right.
I don't want to have a director called the Fire Chief, which doesn't have the Fire Chief potentials. You need a Fire Chief that runs the department. We knew this two years ago, when the chief that was here left. We know we need a Fire Chief to run that department and to run it right. So that being said, I wouldn't have a problem having someone do the administrative, if it was that gonna be, um, Chief Gillen or something for the interim, but as far as the day-to-day, on-the-floor, down-duty work, I want to have someone in the position that knows what the Fire Chief does and, uh, it has that role. And I was trying to get ahold of Mr. Gillen, and I didn't, um, to see what his thoughts on this were. I, I haven't actually talked to him. I think this is a pretty, um, important subject to try and get it done in one night. I know we have the thirty-first coming, but I wouldn't want to make any drastic decisions without listening to the Fire Department and also talking to, um, Chief Gillen as well.
Uh, from what I understand, uh, from the past two interim fire chiefs, the, the struggle has been with the administrative piece. The times, um, the, the schedule, the, the pay, the payroll, um, the administrative of buying things, whatever, that part of it has been the struggle with, um, the time constraints with their full-time job, the Fire Service, and doing the administrative thing. So, if we can find an interim in place to take care of the administrative piece, which Jeff clearly is an expert at doing, the way he's run the Police Department, um, I don't have a, a problem with it at all. It's temporary, uh, until we have a qualified person that the board approves as a, um, full-time Fire Chief, uh, where Jeff already knows how to do a budget, he already knows about personnel, he already knows the administrative piece of a Police Department. I can't see that the difference between the Police Department and the Fire Department administratively is any different.
And if, if I could, Bill, just having, you know, my family, as you know, has served in the Fire Department, and so they're always very close to my heart, and, um, I know that they, they put themselves out there, and they serve us, and they always answer the call. But I think this process of promoting from within over other people on temporary basis, we've done it twice. I think it's, in my mind, administratively somewhat disruptive to the safety operations of the Fire Department, and if you were to look at what you have in place, which is an Assistant Fire Chief who's highly qualified, two captains who are highly qualified, I have no doubt that, um, they will successfully run the fire scenes in the interim, and they have been all along anyway. I mean, this is, this temporary interim measure is really just a patch here administratively to keep us going. And I, I hear what you're saying, Bill. It's August nineteenth, and we got the letter now. We have to accept the letter from Richie now. As of August thirty-first, we need to have an interim patch in place while we go through these interviews, and just to keep the payroll, the administration, anything to do with, um, personnel and administration running smoothly. I, I have a lot of confidence in Jeff Gillen, I do.
I, I hear you, I clearly hear you, but, but if I was in the Fire Department, and I was watching TV right now, and I saw this, this board doing what we're doing, we haven't even talked to the Fire Department, we haven't even talked to Mr. Gillen, and we're ready to make changes. And I think that's us, again, probably stepping out of our role. I mean, it's a good idea and everything, but I just think that we need to slow it down a little bit. I know the thirty-first is coming. We also have an Assistant Chief that was doing the, the, the chief position, and he had to stop because he couldn't afford to do it, or his time, or he couldn't afford to do it. But I, I'm just saying.
Can I just?
I'd like to make sure we're not micromanaging, that's all.
No, we're not micromanaging. Let me just say, let me just put it out there. Let's just clear the air a little bit. There's, there's no, no underhandedness going on here. The Fire Department has been working very diligently without a permanent Fire Chief for a while now, so they know this, they've known about it. I know before I was on the board, you had meetings with them. And, and I feel that, you know, that it's been difficult, looking at them trying to, to muster through this, and that we need to get this together in a way that will make the patch smooth and that will help us proceed. And I see we've just had our arrival of the party here, they must have, they've been watching television. So, welcome. Oh, you came from home, or from a call. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. I said you had a call. Thank you.
Go ahead.
And it's fine if you want to hold off on this and have more discussion, but we still need to have something in, in place.
By the thirty-first.
By the thirty-first, once the resignation takes place.
I got it.
And I think, uh, from my perspective, the captains run everything as it is anyways, each department as far as each firehouse, so they're doing an outstanding job and have been for the last two years. So none of that will change, but, I mean, we, we have to have something, or at least an idea of what we're gonna do.
Right.
Before the thirty-first, not at the thirty-first.
Yeah, I've sat on this board for quite some time, and people always say, "Don't make rash decisions. Think about what you're doing first." And, you know, some people say to me, "I've made rash decisions." Well, the Acting Chief just walked in. Do you mind if we conclude you and what we're talking about a little bit?
Do you want to bring me up to speed on?
Sure.
The discussion?
Yeah, so the discussion so far is that you, we've got your letter, we've accepted your letter for the thirty-first.
Sure.
We need to have a, um, interim chief or whatever. There's been a motion put on the board to have our current Police Chief to be, be either a director or called a chief or whatever.
Sure.
Um, I think Kathy have been going back and forth. My, Ed had a little rebuttal, basically, you know, talking about it. My whole thing was, I don't want to micromanage, I want a little more time, is what I was been saying, and I said, because you hadn't been here, and we haven't talked to Chief Gillen, I'd like to be able to make sure we have this conversation the right way. So now one piece of it's here, if you want to bring us up to speed on what's going on with the department and where, what you're thinking, or what you had planned, or whatever.
Is this on?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just, I don't know where the board stands on the process or how far we are along on hiring the full-time chief.
Okay, so, we have got five.
Yep.
Members.
Candidates.
Candidates, so I should say candidates. We have a board of chiefs.
Yes.
That have been dealing with it. I was told that two of them are strong, three of them may not be, but they're saying now they want to bring them all before us and let us interview all three, all five.
I'm, I'm sorry, I got into, the, the letter that we have in our packets says as follows, that there are five candidates for the Fire Chief role. The Fire Chief Screening Committee recommended all five be scheduled for preliminary interviews to see how they come across in person versus their resume. Preliminary interviews with the Screening Committee will be scheduled for early September. So by that, I understand that these preliminary interviews will not be with us. That's why we're allowing the Fire Chiefs.
Okay.
To take, to run this for us, so that they are in charge of it.
So, just kind of bringing up speed on my decision to step back to captain from doing the chief's job. Been in this role, it'll be fifteen months, eighteen out of the month. Would like to stay on a little longer, but my full-time job, which pays all my bills, is changed, um, requiring a lot more of my attention. So, running out of time to be able to do both jobs. At this time, I, I believe that we could probably get one of the captains to step up for a couple of months, maybe, if, if this looks like it's gonna go through. If, I think keeping the Fire Chief delegation of authority in, in the hands of someone who basically knows the job, or base, you know, the Fire Department side of things, would be probably a little more efficient.
Let me ask you a question. A lot of people have said that the administration ends of things are a lot, as you know, you've been doing it.
Yes.
So, would it be, back to what Kathy and Mike are saying, would it be, make sense to have the, and I haven't had a conversation with them, only getting bits and pieces of this now, the Police Chief, do the administration and the, the, um, the help, or whatever you want to call it, let him do that in, and let a chief do the firing, until we can get someone hired? If we, if we sat down and talked to someone in September, I bet you it's not gonna be till November, December anyway before we bring someone on board, because you got negotiations, you got.
Sure.
Interviews and what have you. So this is gonna be another six-month jaunt that I can see, you know what I mean? Maybe, maybe less if we get it moving quickly, but, go ahead.
That's what I was gonna say. If, if one of the captains did want to step up and maybe look at an interim Fire Chief, we don't know if it's a month, or five months, or six months. We have no idea. So we can't.
That, that, yeah, but that would be them to make that decision on how much time they're willing to put forward.
But they might get into the position like you did and be like, "Wow, this is a lot of administrative stuff, and now I, I can't do my full-time job, which is where my career is, and do this other full-time piece, because I wasn't anticipating it." So that's what we're kind of looking at it is, if someone did want to step up and put the name out there, fantastic.
Yeah.
But, a month down the road would be like, "Well, this is a lot more than I bargained for. Can I really keep up with this?" I don't know if it's a month or six months, I have no idea.
I could definitely say that, uh, both my captains do understand, because they have been kind of involved, uh, for a good chunk of what this chief's job concerns. Uh, they have been kind of brought up to be backup, in case they needed to fill, you know, if I, something happened to me, or if I was, had to travel for work, that they could still step into the position.
Right.
We do have one of the captains here who happens to be retired, so time is more available if, if he decides, but that's, again, up to the board to make that offer to him, and it's up to him to accept.
I think it's up to him to put his hat in the ring, and then it's up to us to accept it or appoint it in that process. We can't just say, "Hey, how would you be the new chief?"
Well, it's kind of how it worked when, when I did.
Well, you, while you, you kind of put your hat out there, they get, well, it was kind of on the spot, you're right, but it was, it was something that.
Knowing the, knowing the position you've been in, do you think, honestly, do you think it would be less headaches to let your captain step up to be the interim chief and let him do the, the training and all that good stuff, running that end of it, and then let someone like the chief do the administrative? Is there a mu, is there that much of it that it's involved to the point where it would be better to let the chief do it?
Well.
I'm asking you, I, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I mean.
No, I understand, but the, the part with, with this job that it really got more overwhelming is all the building going on in town.
Right.
We have Salem Street with a hundred and ninety-two units, we got meetings with them, we get to make sure that they're following the code, um, there's inspectors involved, there's a lot of, uh, research done in the back office that needs to be, you know, kept up to date. So, I, I think that, you know, one of my captains could probably, you know, as long as they have time to, you know, commit to it, then. But if you bring the Police Chief in on that part of things.
Right. Four minutes of seven.
I, I have to seven.
Yeah, just let him know that, that we're gonna have.
At seven o'clock, I have to shut it down for hearing and come back to it again.
Okay.
Okay, so, my whole point is, I didn't have a conversation, I, like I said, I'm kind of, this is, I've heard it out there, but it's kind of new.
Yep.
I, I would like to sit down with the Chief Gillen and say to him, "Listen, uh, if you were gonna do this, do you have the time to take on?"
Sure.
I, maybe he knows the administrative, I don't know. I honestly don't know. But like you said, there's a lot of other stuff that goes on over there that, that's get, that gets involved. Does he think it's just payroll? Does he think it's just personnel problems? I don't know. I, I haven't had that conversation with him, so I really don't know.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ed.
I think the, uh, the payroll part of it and, uh, uh, that, that's probably the easy part. And we got, uh, we got one of the captains here who's got, uh, uh, if he would, maybe we should, you should see if he is interested in it and step up to the plate. He's got time, uh, he's retired, uh, and I, I, I don't think it's gonna take till the first of the year. The interviews are scheduled, uh, for the first of September, uh, you know, we've really been dragging our feet. Now, here we come down to, uh, the nineteenth of the month. We received a letter from the, uh, interim chief, uh, it was actually four weeks ago that he was gonna resign, uh, step down. We got it at our meeting. We, we, we never addressed it.
No, we didn't get a letter.
And now we, now we come down to, uh, less than.
Can I say point of order? We did not receive the letter in our packets until this evening, so we have not dragged our feet on accepting resignation. We cannot accept a verbal resignation. It has to be in writing.
No, the letter was, I believe the letter was.
And I apologize for interrupting. I'm just trying to make sure that people watching the show understand that, honestly, the, all five of us have been working very diligently on this, and so too has our Screening Committee and the Volunteer Fire Chiefs, and our intentions are for the good of the whole department, and I, I appreciate all the input and all that, but I just want us as that, we have been doing everything we should do for the town of Groveland and for the Fire Department. We're looking out for both sides, so.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The le, the letter was, I believe, just over three weeks ago. It was given to Denise.
It's in our packet today.
Where I was asked to give it to.
Okay.
Whether or not it made it into your packet tonight, I do, I do not know.
Okay, we'll start out with, Bill wants to say something until seven o'clock.
Well, first of all, I want to personally thank you for the fifteen months you spent as interim Fire Chief. I don't know if we can really put in words, um, what that meant to the town while we were searching for a, a full-time chief. Second, I think we're in a position today that we weren't in just a couple of weeks ago, where we have, uh, allegedly two strong candidates. We didn't have that two weeks ago. We had no one. Uh, no one was either strong or weak. They were just disqualified. So I think we're a lot closer to making a hire than we were just a week or two ago, based on the information I see in front of me. I don't think it's going to be another five or six months. If these two candidates are as strong as indicated, I think it's gonna be a relatively quick process, I'd say maybe a couple of months, tops. I also would like to say that I respect Chief Gillen tremendously. I think he does a tremendous job in what he does, but I wouldn't want to see him distracted from his main, uh, role of protecting the citizens of the town. Uh, this might take him away from, distract him a bit from his main duties, where I kind of feel, was rather stronger with you, I think it would be better, uh, an interim coming from within the department for right now, and I don't think it's gonna be a long time. So if somebody would step up. You gotta stop me. Ah, jeez.
I just gotta stop from there to do this hearing, and we'll come right back to it, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, it's seven o'clock, and we have a, um, the Groveland Board of Selectmen will conduct a, a public hearing on Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven PM, in the main meeting room of Town Hall, one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, Mass, on the. on the joint petition, petition of Verizon New England, Inc., and the town of Groveland Municipal Light Company requesting permission to relocate pole, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guides, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in a common by your petitioners along and across the following public ways or ways. Center Street located at one J O pole, P seventy-seven, approximately thirty-five feet northerly, northeasterly from its existing location on the northerly side of Center Street. The petition is necessary in order to accommodate a new driveway. Location approximately shown on the plan attached, New England, Verizon New England, Plan Number four eight O J one T K dated July two thousand nineteen. Also, for, for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above intersecting public way for purpose of marking connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purpose. Petitioners agree that the space shall be reserved and maintained from the limit purpose of attaching one-way low-voltage fire and police signal, signaling wires owned by the municipal or government entry for public safety purposes only. The Board of Selectmen shall consider public comment made before granting or denying said request. So, can I get a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Castanellis?
So, do we need a motion to open the...
Make a motion.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second?
Executive.
Okay, any further discussion? So, can I get a roll call vote?
Yep.
Ms. Castanellis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn, yes. Okay. So, the, the butters were notified via a certified mail on August eighth. Anyone here from Verizon to speak, show right up to the podium with their request to relocate the pole?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Steve Bigley, B-I-G-L-E-Y. I work for Utility Consultants Synergetics. We are a contractor for Verizon, and I'm here to represent the interests of Verizon New England in this request.
Okay.
I drove by the site this evening, it's, I guess there's a new horse barn, it looks like it's going up there, and the driveway comes down and the pole is in the way, they're requesting we move it thirty-five feet.
Okay. Yep. Anyone have anything you want to comment about?
Who's costing?
Pardon me?
Who pays?
Verizon.
Verizon paying, okay. Not the taxpayers of Groveland or any resident in Groveland?
Not unless it was a special request worked out by a, by a petitioner that requested Verizon. Verizon does usually charge for this.
Anyone else? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak publicly on this matter? Okay.
May I make the motion?
Yep, go ahead, make a motion.
A motion to approve the relocation of one J O pole, P dot seven-seven, approximately thirty-five feet northeasterly from its existing location on the northerly side of Center Street, as described on Plan Number four A O J one T K dated July nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
When is this work planning or being done?
I, I don't know, I don't control that. Once it's, once it's clear petition, then the job moves through the, through the process.
Is it a one-day job?
I would say so, yeah. Transferring the lines from the old pole, that may take, I don't know, it's in the work schedule, but it's a one-day job to place the pole, yes.
Would there be any disruption to the residents or the businesses on that street while the work is being done?
No.
No further questions?
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so I can add a roll call vote on this. Ms. Castanellis?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn, yes. Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Okay, so, the word has been taken, I need to close the public hearing. I get a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing at seven oh five PM. I return to regular board meeting.
Second?
Second.
No further discussion? On the table.
Yeah, you're a roll call.
It's a roll.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
We'll start with Mr. Wood.
Sure.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Watson, and Ms. Castanellis.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So now, we go back to the discussion.
To back to Chief York.
That's a lot of pages.
So, with that said, I think I had the floor before the, the public hearing. Do you have a candidate in mind from within the department that you feel would be qualified and could do the time and would be comfortable with the paperwork, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
Sure, I do. And I'd like to recommend Captain Sanapolo, who happens to be retired, so he has a lot more time. He is very familiar with the paperwork, more than willing to assist him as need, as needed to make sure that he, you know, is up to date on that. Things are in pretty good shape in the chief's office for what we have coming up. The biggest, I guess the biggest thing, and I was just talking with Rebecca in the other office here, is we have so many meetings coming up, so many, so much building, and not just houses, but storage facilities, multifamily, that really we're, we need to be involved with to make sure that the code is, you know, enforced, and not like in the past where things have been built in, you know, substandard. We need to make sure we're on top of this, and we need to stay that way, you know. We need to leave this hopefully in good shape for when the full-time chief takes over, and not leave him a bag of stuff.
Cool. Absolutely.
You good?
I'm good.
So, can I get Joe to?
Yes, you can.
Come up and have a couple of quick words with Joe?
I'm Joseph Sanapolo, seventy-five Washington Street, I'm acting captain at cell station.
So, Joe, so I know that when the bell rings, I usually hear you, the first one out there.
I'm around more than I ever was, so, yes.
I'm just saying, number one, thank you very much, because I know that you put your heart and soul into the, the fire service and what have you. I'm, I'm going to ask you very candidly, as the chairman, do you see a problem with the administration end of things? As far as, I know you'll have more time than the people that work full-time, because you're retired and...
No, and I know, you know, I know Richie will help me, I mean, I've helped him since the beginning, when he took it over, I said I would, I've always tried to get out there, so, a lot of what he did, I've already had hands-on. So, I'm sure there's other things I didn't see, but I'm sure he'll help me. I don't see him disappearing anymore than I did, so...
Okay.
I mean, I know, I don't want to be the guy you pick in the end, my name's not in that hat you looked at, you noticed?
Right.
I do feel a call to duty to keep the department together.
Right, my other, my other question to you would be, is we had a situation where every year you've got to up your, your, um,
Medical.
doctor, medical, because of your retirement and your age and all that. I don't think this would take a year, but we could do it based on, if, if they do it, I'm not saying, I'm just saying.
When I renewed this year, I sent him two different physicals to the chief.
Right.
I gave him a CDL physical that I had, because I still have a roasting license.
Yep.
And my regular doctor gave me a note again, and I'm sure I should keep doing it.
But what I'm, what I was getting at is, let's just say, God forbid, I mean, you're, you're good for how long, till next year?
Till I turn seventy.
So, I thought you, every year you had to get a, a letter from your doctor?
Yeah, if you require a physical, a letter from my doctor, yes.
Right, that's what we required.
That's an easy thing, I accepted that, it was actually my idea to do that.
Right. But what I'm saying to you is, you're good up for what now, for that, for the physical?
As far as the state goes, right now, I'm good till next July one.
July, so we have time, that's what I'm getting at, we have, we have time.
I didn't know where you were going down that road.
No, no, we're covered for, up until July.
Yeah.
So, okay, that's enough of my questions for now. Do you have something you want to say, Ed?
Yes, we, we have a motion on the floor.
Well, we're in discussion still.
Yeah, I know, but if we're going to make a, if we're going to make a, if we're going to make a, a motion to appoint Joe, we got to either
Right.
withdraw the motion or vote it down.
Right, and I'm, I thought we were still in discussion, are we not?
No, we're still in discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. I think Bill wants to talk again, I'm sorry, Kathy had it in the...
No, they'll talk.
Go ahead, that's all right, go ahead, Kathy.
Are you sure?
I didn't see it through, Ed. Go ahead.
That's all right. So, I guess I'm wondering two things. I'm wondering why you didn't submit a letter to us during this interim period of time until tonight? Because I think you, you knew within the fire department that Richie was stepping down, and so it would have been nice to have had something in our packet. My motion tonight, I'll say, is premised on the fact that we did not get any letters or anything from any of the members of the fire department stating that they wanted to serve, we didn't get a recommendation letter from Chief York telling us who we would recommend. And so, this is all kind of coming onto the carpet tonight, which is fine, that's what we're here for, we're here to listen to you. But I, I also want to say that Captain Briscoe is also equally qualified, and he is not present tonight. And I guess my motion in trying to move the administrative duties off to Chief Gillen, and I do not think he'll be distracted, I think he's quite a capable person, and he's there all day, so that getting the administration aspect of this department done would be well within his capability, I'm sure. However, I would not want to cause distress within the fire department. That being said, I also don't want other members of the fire department to think that, sitting here tonight, you walk in with your, your second-in-command from cell station and say, this is the guy, and we're voting that guy right here and now. I don't see how that's not a hasty decision as well. And I guess I'm a little concerned here, now that we have a couple of options on the table, that maybe I'm more than willing to withdraw my motion if maybe we can take a little more time on this and have a special meeting or something to sort this out without such haste, and make sure that we're getting the input from both stations, and from our police chief, and from our financial director, that this, this patch will work, that it will be all right.
I wasn't, I wasn't trying to make a hasty decision, and I would, I didn't make a motion yet. I was having discussions to try and, people in front of me have a discussion with them to try and bring it to the forefront, and I would definitely would not make a hasty decision. Did you say you wanted to talk again?
Yeah, I just want to ask the captain a couple of questions. Do you understand what's involved?
I'm sure I know eighty percent of what's involved. I'm sure there's twenty percent that, like any job, you step into, there's mud on the trail.
And you have no qualms about picking this role up for a couple of, three months if necessary?
It's only because it's a few months.
Well, that's the plan, it's a few months. What if it's...
Hopefully, there's a light at that tunnel and there's another train coming.
I'm not trying to be negative, but I've been here, and nothing in government works fast. I'm telling you right now.
I agree with you.
Nothing works fast, so I'm going to say six. So, I mean, we're two years down the road, and we're still trying to get this taken care of, and, and we knew all along we needed a chief in the beginning, and now here we are again, we need a chief. So, I'm not trying to be wise, I'm just trying to say, we're two years down the road, and now what's one more night or one more meeting to get it right, that's all I'm saying.
I agree.
Okay.
I'll be honest, I, he can tell you, I've been back and forth in this for weeks. It's not something I'd enter into lightly, it's huge. I think titles come with a lot of responsibility. I've always tried to do whatever I had for a title in life to do my best on that. The reason I didn't, is, if you asked me this afternoon, I would have told you I'm probably fifty-fifty on the fence still. I just was not, I just, I just feel this big call to duty to keep this department together come September one.
All right, Caitlin, when's our next meeting?
Second.
What is it?
Day after.
September second.
Well, we can have a meeting before if we have to.
We could schedule a special meeting, yes.
Before, go ahead, Bill.
Chief York, is there anyone else within the department that has indicated a willingness to step up to that role besides the captain to your left?
No, not at this time, not to me. I know that Captain Briscoe has stated that he does not have the time with his business to fulfill this, you know, position, even if it's a short time. And if, could I speak here, just, I just wanted to clarify a few things, just, you know, to the public here is, I submitted a verbal, a verbal indication that I was going to be finishing up at the end of the month about four weeks ago. It's right around three weeks ago, I did submit a letter to Denise, which I was asked to give it to her. Whether or not it showed up in your packet tonight, I, I have no control over that. As far as this meeting tonight, I never saw any personal invite for the fire chief to be here. So, any decisions made as stated that last minute, if, if I was asked to be here, you know, personally, I would have been here, I could have given you more information upfront. So, I mean, it's a, you know, two-way street here. I can't, you know, give you something if you don't let me know you need it.
I can certainly respect the position you've been thrown into here, where you weren't on the agenda and this is coming kind of out of left field.
Sure.
And, and I agree with you a hundred percent, because I'm, I was getting bits and pieces myself, and in the beginning of the meeting, I said, I would like to talk to you, I would like to talk to Chief Gillen, as it's here.
Sure.
Get both sides of the story, and like I had said earlier on, maybe someone in the department wants to step up to the plate, I don't know, you know what I mean? So, that being said, that's where I was going from. I, I don't like to make hasty decisions, and I've been told before I do make hasty decisions. In my personal life, I do, but whatever, you know what I mean? So, I, Mike had his hand up.
We need to clarify, though, that the letter I'm seeing from you was dated August fifth, so it's just two weeks ago, so this is, is in our, this was put in our packet exactly on a timely basis. We have been reacting as quickly as we possibly can
Sure.
to keep things running. So, again, you know, I think you're doing the same thing we're doing, we're both trying to work towards a common goal. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, go ahead. Yeah, along with communications, we should have had you invited to this meeting, but it would have been good if you had had conversations with Joe about possibly being interested in the interim, to have that information prior to tonight as well.
Well, he...
But he was on the fence, I mean, even the, even the possibility that yay or nay, he might be interested, would have been, would have been great too.
I didn't want to put him out to the board if he said no, then put him on the floor.
Right, so you're coming in half, I guess, informed, because you're coming in blind, and we're coming in blind, because we only have so much information too, and we have to find out.
That's why we need more on this, we just can't do it.
Let's, let's work together and do what's best for the town.
Right, we need more on it. Ed wanted to say something.
I think we have the perfect candidate, he's, he's got the time to do it, he's, he's retired. He'll, he'll be a placeholder until we get a full-time person in, in, in the position. He's certainly enthusiastic, he makes a lot of calls, and it certainly would make sense to have him step up to the plate.
Okay, we have someone in the audience that wanted to talk, but you have to come to the podium, give me your name and all that, real quick.
My name is Rock Dollar, I live at one oh seven School Street. I'd just like to give you a little bit of my feeling toward what's going on right now. Having been in the fire service for a great number of years, having served as chief for twenty, been there, done that. As far as public safety directors go, in a small town, it doesn't work. It just puts a, it drives a wedge between the fire and the police. It just doesn't work. I worked under Chief Birkenbush, but he was fire chief and he was police chief, he wasn't public safety director. He was still head of the both departments, and that makes a difference. Linfield did the same thing. They had a police chief who had a fire, became fire chief, but from what I hear in listening to the chief, what he needs is a clerk to help him out with the paperwork. You're going to have the same problem when you hire a full-time chief. He's still going to need a clerk to help with the paperwork. And, you know, I think that should be started now. I don't know if there's any part-time people here, you know, that could help out as a clerk, get some of this paperwork done, get the letters out. The chief, the full-time chief's going to be busy, like, like Chief York said, with inspections and everything else, plus the fact, at times, there are meetings that a chief has to go to to help out, find out what's going on, and that's how you learn. And, and as far as the fire, fire departments go, we are trained so that they know the pecking order. They know who's going to be in charge of the fire. If the chief isn't there, it goes right down to the deputy chief, the captain. So, even if you don't have a part-time chief, or something happens, it'll be, one of the officers will be there. So, just my thoughts, I think we ought to look at, at hiring a clerk, at getting somebody, someplace this full-time chief can have some clerical help.
So, so our thoughts were, and it hasn't been talked about deeply, but our thoughts were, once we get a new chief in, we shouldn't be directing him what to do, we should be... We should be... We're hiring the professional to do the job. We're going to listen to him. If he says he needs an administrator, if he needs a full guy, we're going to try and listen to what he has to say.
Oh, of course.
That's what we're trying to do.
But I think that's part of it that should be looked into now.
But let me just say, Rock, that we did have a clerk, and the fire chief, the last permit...
I know what happened.
Got rid of our clerk and said, "We don't need this one." And that's water under the bridge. It's all water under the bridge now.
We're starting new right now with a new thought process and how we're going to go forward.
And we're just trying to keep the fire department running. So if it's...
It'll run.
If it's... Of course, it'll run. I know they'll go to the calls and all that. They always do. They always answer the call. That's the honorable and amazing part.
Look for a clerk now. Get it started. Get it in the back of your mind so that when the new chief comes in, all of a sudden, he's hit with... He's got to learn the town. He's got to learn how everything goes. So he's going to need help, too. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so...
Again, I just want to make it clear that my motion is just to try and consolidate the administrative part. If this board wants to entertain members from within to promote up and over again, and if that's something you think will patch, will be better, I feel like we need to get some information on how that patch is going to work and then just do it. I mean, I just want to make sure things go smoothly till we bring in the new chief. I'm just looking for the smoothest, easiest transition we can make. So if you wish, if it's the wish right now to just withdraw the motion so we don't vote on anything tonight, I can do that. Glad to do that. Voluntarily withdraw the motion.
Whatever you want to do. I personally would like to have more conversation.
Sure.
I myself, as the chairman, want to go see Chief Gillen. I now have heard, I got a pretty good idea where the fire department's heading. I may get a hold of Joe during the day and say, "Joe, can we have a cup of coffee and talk?" And then next time we all get together, we can have more information. If we have to invite more people here, we'll invite more people. But that's just me. I can't speak on behalf of the other members.
I think it's fine, because we've gotten all new information in one twenty-minute segment tonight or thirty-minute segment tonight.
We're done.
Okay, so number one, I, like I just said, I would like to do... Me, I would like to do a little more talking, fishing, figuring things out, and go from there. I don't know what the other board members want to do. But again, I would like to say thank you for you stepping up and taking the role that you did and the other chiefs before did and deputies did and what have you. And like someone said, it's keeping the department together while we're going through this difficult time. We're getting there, but as government goes, it goes slow. So, you know...
Yeah, as far as Police Chief Gillen, I think I have a great working relationship with him. I most respect for him. But if we're only looking for three, four, maybe five months, do we want to start bringing and teaching someone outside?
What I was going to say is whoever we talk to, and this is a conversation I'm going to have, I'm going to sit down with Chief Gillen, and whoever... If it's him or whoever, if it's him, it's going to be easy, but someone's going to have to be the head man of the fire department. Could you guys work together? Could you work closely for the next X amount of months? You know what I mean? I'm sure they do anyway, but let's keep him in the role. Why kick him to the curb? Let's include him in the mix. The more in the mix, the better off we are. You know what I mean?
I think our relationship between the fire department and the police department is probably the best it's been in probably decades.
I agree. I agree. And it's probably the person that runs it. I mean, you've got quality people that run things. You've got quality people in your department. It runs smoothly. You know what I mean?
Correct.
Anyway, well, thank you all for coming in, and we'll finish up on our end. So Kathy, do you want to withdraw?
I did. I withdrew. Yes, I did. Thank you. And we'll just wait and schedule a second meeting at the end of a meeting.
Perfect. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Well, the fire chief is here, and a prospective candidate, why don't we figure out a time for a meeting?
A what?
Time for a meeting. We've got almost two weeks.
But we have to get one in the interim before the...
No, that's what I mean. While they're here, make sure that it coincides with their schedule if we schedule a meeting.
George retired, so he can come anytime, right?
That's funny. Well, today's the nineteenth. The 26th, I'm free.
We have to get it done before the next meeting.
Well, I said the 26th. It's a Monday.
I'm not available on the 26th. I'm available any other day in the next two weeks, but...
I'm available the 28th.
I'm available on the 28th.
You guys? Were we looking at the 26th?
28th.
26th works better for me than 28th.
I said he wasn't avail... Or someone wasn't available.
Yeah, I wasn't available on the 26th.
You know that's not Labor Day, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I can read that on the calendar.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you got the weekends confused.
What's the 28th?
It's Wednesday night?
28th is a Wednesday. How about this Wednesday night, the 21st?
Don't have posting time.
Conservation's got a...
I'd like to have some time to go talk to the parties involved, so we come in informed, and if I have to invite them in or whatever.
Correct. I'd like to have time. What's wrong with the 28th again? Someone's not...
28th does not work for me.
How about 29?
No, from the 28th on till through the Labor Day weekend.
27.
25th, it's a Sunday.
27. It's Tuesday.
That works fine.
I'm giving out my cardio kickboxing for this guy, so be aware.
Are you good on the 27th, Mike?
Not really.
Yeah, I'm at Franklin Pierce College in Jeffrey, New Hampshire on that date.
Well, we are now, we're going to be going past the date.
22nd, this coming Thursday, should give three days to speak with whoever needs to be spoken with.
I don't know if that's sufficient.
This Thursday, I can't do it. I've already got estimates booked at night.
I could probably try to call and cancel, but I won't get here till... It's about 25th. It's Sunday afternoon.
We can't post meetings on Sundays, I think. I don't know. I just think we're not supposed to.
Whatever.
I know.
Pick a day.
Well, we could have an afternoon meeting if you... I mean, I'm... Well, wait a minute. I'm back to work, so...
Friday, the 23rd?
The what?
Friday, the 23rd.
Right. How about before the second meeting?
I can't do 23rd.
That's what I was looking at the whole week.
But the 31st, he's all done the 31st. It'd be a couple of days, but he'd be out. We wouldn't have anyone. But...
What is the conflict on the 26th? Could you do something earlier or later?
On the 26th? No, yes, I have another meeting to attend to.
So... And what's the conflict on the 27th? Could we meet earlier or avoid it? I mean, I don't think we have to take that long.
I don't have anything on the 27th.
Whoever had the conflict on the 27th?
I can't do the 27th.
How about the 28th?
I think Bill's out of town on the 28th.
29.
The Labor Day.
Labor Day is too late. Should I start again?
I'm going to throw out the 25th again.
We're back to Sunday, the 25th.
Well, go to this week. We got Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week.
What about Friday this week?
How about tonight?
What about Friday this week?
Friday?
Friday this week?
I can't Friday.
Thursday this week. I got estimates. I'll have to rebook them, but...
I guess I could do Thursday.
You're busy Thursday.
I'm going back to Monday, the 26th.
I can't do Saturday.
Anyone got during the day?
Yes, I said, well, not starting the 26th, I'm back to work, so no. I'm a free...
No, I have this thing called work.
Yes, any day, I'm available.
Yeah, gets in the way of doing fun stuff. 25th.
What happens if we go past the 31st and we just meet the next week? What's the problem?
You won't have anyone in the... You just won't have an interim chief in the...
Is that like a... I mean, is that like... Because it's something that will get us all arrested or anything?
Well, we could appoint Joe for three days until, and then meet early on Tuesday, the 3rd, or our next meeting.
If they know that we don't have anyone for a couple of days, I'm sure they're going to step up to the... Someone's going to...
Well, the only thing is, if say somebody's here, we could be burning in the backyard, and you don't have somebody's in there to help the chief officer, we can't tell them to put that fire off.
Right, okay.
Perhaps Rich would stay until...
We already accepted his resignation.
So we have a meeting here on the 2nd. So can we meet early in the 2nd? So we're going to go from the 31st to the 2nd.
The 2nd is a holiday, isn't it?
No, the 1st is a holiday.
2nd is a Tuesday.
Seems like everyone's busy.
No, it's not.
How about December 1st?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We're meeting on the 3rd, Tuesday, the 3rd.
Correct. That's what I'm saying.
Well, to go back to what Selectman Watson said, is it possible that we can name the captain here interim for four days from the September 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, and even the 4th, until we can come back and meet on this on the 3rd? That'll buy us four days.
You could do that, as long as the fire marshal has to know who's in charge of the fire department. That's what it goes down to.
May I make a suggestion? If you're going to make like a temporary, like thirty-day appointment or something, just do a thirty-day appointment. And then we'll gather our notes and our information, and we'll make an assessment as to whether or not this will work.
What seems a difficulty surrounding us right now is the date. We can't all agree on one date. But if we can buy thirty days, that would give us...
I would buy thirty days rather than four days, because the way government works, getting back to Bill Dunn's thing.
There's no doubt about it.
The way government works, there's no telling what might happen that might prevent us from getting back to this in time. And I wouldn't put us in a position of, within four days, not having what we're supposed to have in place.
Does someone want to make a motion then, based on what we just talked about?
I will. I'll make a motion that we have Joe Santa Paulo stand in as interim fire chief until September 30th.
Second.
All in favor? No, further discussion. Enough of that. Further discussion. Further discussion. All set? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
I was hoping they'd appoint me Joe, but...
Well, Mike would have wanted it. I didn't know. Mike, we definitely would have totally considered you.
Thirty days. Thirty days.
He just wants to be able to...
It covers for thirty days.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
We can't even pick a day.
Can you explain it to me? Well, hopefully, two of these five will be strong enough that we can make them an offer in October, have somebody in full-time by the end of October, and we leave you with...
Point of order, we might need to make the motion more specific, September 1st to September 30th, if you want to make it specific.
Right, no, I know. I think we should make it specific.
Okay, so we can...
September 1st to the 30th.
To September 30th. That's a new motion.
Second.
What are we talking about?
All in favor?
Just clarifying for the record.
Just because you said the vote, what am I talking about?
Clarifying the dates, the time, the 1st to the 31st.
30th. There's no 31st in September. Oh, my God.
30th.
You need to really...
Thank you for, Joe, thank you for stepping up. Thank you for stepping up.
Or this goes worse. Yes.
Okay.
I think so. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. See Caitlin this week about whatever else you may need to do before September 1st. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on.
Moving along.
We have discussion about the cable TV advisory committee.
Well, and the cable contract, of course.
Discussion about the cable TV advisory committee, spending, and cable contract negotiations?
Yes.
Okay. Who wants to start that?
The chairman of the board is here. Start with him.
Head of the House.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Gelford, For Abbott Circle, current chairperson of the Cable TV Advisory Board.
I guess, do you have any information on spending?
On spending? I don't understand exactly what you mean by spending.
Well, maybe, I don't know where everybody else is on this, but I know from serving on the cable contract negotiation last time I was on the Board of Selectmen that that contract is the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen, as is any spending under it. And we've gotten recent correspondence from our attorney, you know, keeping us up to date on the money changes that may or may not be happening. It's complex. So I guess all I would ask, when I got on the board and started to review the contract, I was looking for records of the spending. And as I understand it, the Board of Selectmen is not pre-voting the spending. It's not brought to the board when you're purchasing new things before you buy them, because I would think that would be what you should be doing, I think.
Besides the interrupt.
Yeah, I think that's what you should be doing because we sign the contract.
Basically, I've done just what Denise and previous Board of Selectmen have said. They wanted it run.
Oh, okay, okay.
So if this board wants it changed, I mean, I would almost personally like to see a budget set up kind of like any other department so that we would have, you know, know how things are spent.
That would be...
Again, that was the way previous boards had set it up. And that was the way Denise, basically Denise and Chris...
Inherited it.
Whoever the finance director, when it was Greg. Greg and Chris basically did. Chris would approach us, the board, and say, "I need this for equipment because something failed," or "I would like to see this," and the board would meet. Just to bring you up to speed, the board had not met for the longest time because we couldn't get people to serve. Like a number of the other boards and committees, volunteerism is down. So it was a challenge to get people. As far as our negotiations, we are working towards... Over the summer, we were talking about doing an online survey, which should be going online probably within the next few weeks. We have to have a meeting to vote on the questions to go online. It didn't happen sooner as we had anticipated, because just like all of you trying to make that meeting to discuss the chief during the summer, everyone has vacation plans and work plans that didn't coincide. So that was a little confusing. The other issue we have, I don't know if any of you have been following in the news, is Verizon and Comcast are working really hard to eliminate public cable access. And I was talking to somebody, and it's like, if you are going to negotiate, you're not going to get anywhere, because they're waiting for the FCC ruling to come down for us before they're going to write any other contracts. And that has the initial feedback from the FCC is that they're going to be cutting the monies at the towns. You know, I'm going to be consulting Bill Hewig, our attorney, since that's his expertise to find out where we're going to go with that. But again, they're not going to negotiate a new contract, you know, without that ruling from the FCC. But having said that, we are going to go ahead with the survey to find out what people want. I do want to just change gears for just a second, if I could. I apologize. To the board, you know, I haven't been here for the last couple of meetings because we had an employee coworker of mine leave the company. So that meant I was rotated around to some of our other offices, which kept me away. I want to thank Charlie Mendez, who stepped up, has been recording the board. I also want to thank Chris. Chris is largely responsible, working with our sound consultant for the new microphones that you have out here, and also the PA system in this room. And I have to say, tonight is my first time here since the new system was installed. And sitting back there with Charlie, the sound is much better. The PA system works good, so it was a good design. So I'm happy with the consultant that we hired to do the job in the installation. I think it's really going to help us out in the room here. But getting back to the contract, are there questions? going to help us out in the room here. But getting back to the contract, are there questions that board members? I know Denise had sent out the, what do you call that? The draft that Comcast sent. If I can ask, did that get forwarded to the board members so you can read through and offer your feedback? One of the things I see looking at it, I would like feedback from the board as to what they want us to ask for the percentage, whether they want it left out. I think we are three point two-five percent, or the, whether the board wants us to change that to four percent, or ask for five. The industry is changing in that a number of people are going away from cable. A lot of people, I have friends that don't even watch any television anymore. They get all the, their news on their cell phones because they have unlimited data. They don't care about watching the big TVs. So it is a changing industry, so I don't know what that is going to mean for us in the coming months.
Sure. I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I guess, I'm a little confused.
Yeah.
A moment ago, I thought you said that the cable companies don't want to do contracts because they're waiting for an FCC ruling. Is that correct?
I didn't say they don't want to do contracts. They're not, from some-
Not negotiating contracts, you said?
They're, they're not as willing to negotiate until they find out if the FCC is going to rule in favor of them, or rule in favor of the towns and cities, is what I said.
Currently, we have a draft contract, right?
Right.
So how does that fit in? If they don't want to negotiate contracts because they're waiting for the FCC, but we have a draft contract, how does that, isn't that-
Well, a draft contract is just something you discuss. I mean, it's no different than you negotiating terms with, you know, the new fire chief.
Right, but if I didn't want to negotiate terms with the new fire chief, I certainly wouldn't put something in a draft.
Of course you would.
Why?
Because you can negotiate. I mean, the last time we negotiated in Kathy, you probably, you know, it was months of negotiation. But anyone who knows about negotiations is that you can ask for as much as you want, and they're going to counter with, no, this is what we're gonna, gonna offer you. And until the two come to a consensus of what's going to work best for both, it's not going.
I guess I just have my, this conundrum, the confusion comes with, you, you stated that they, they're waiting for this FCC ruling, so they don't want to negotiate a contract.
I, I said they're not as willing-
They're not as willing to negotiate a contract.
To negotiate until they see where that ruling is going to come, whether it's going to go in their favor or the towns and cities.
Tracy?
Yes?
Is the draft right now a draft from your board or from the cable?
No, it's from Comcast.
Okay, so I think what Bill's trying to say is, why would they send, send that over if they weren't going to be willing to negotiate?
Because we're the negotiating committee. We're the, we're the people that sign it.
We didn't talk over each other.
I'm sorry, look at that. I was just trying to figure it out.
I know, I know. We're all talking over each other and it just makes it very confusing for anybody trying to follow the conversation.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I've done a bit stepped over enough. Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Ed.
Well, look, I've done a little research on this, and just to bring everybody up to speed. Community television stations are threatened by an FCC ruling. It was on a three to two vote that would allow cable providers to reduce fees paid to local media centers to cover in-kind services that they perform. As a result of the ruling, cable providers will be able to keep some of the money as payment for such services as senior discounts and fiber optic network into government buildings. The cable providers are required to fund local access channels in exchange for his use of public property for his wires and cables. Companies pay that cost by charging a franchise fee on a monthly basis. Well, they want to keep more of the franchise fee based upon the ruling from the FCC to cover some of these costs that they're giving the seniors as a discount and wiring up some of your, your public buildings. And I think that's one of the things that they want to stop doing is paying to wire up some of the government buildings. In addition, a bill has been proposed in the, in the Massachusetts Legislature to charge a fee for, for digital streaming. And the proposal in, in the bill is a five percent fee. They're not, they're not paying anything for the digital streaming services now, but there's a bill before the legislature to start to do that. Of course, it's got to wait before it goes through. The split would be state, cities and towns budgets, as well as the local access channels, with a breakdown of twenty, forty, forty. Twenty percent for the state, forty for city and town budgets, and forty for the local access channels. And just to reiterate what Tracy was saying, the cable provider, they're, they're taking their time in negotiating the contracts to see how the fee plays out from the FCC as well as the bill before the Massachusetts Legislature. So they're not, it, it, it used to be just a slam dunk that they'd sign the contract, but they, they're dragging their feet to, to see how it's going to affect, the legislature's going to affect it as well as the FCC ruling.
Hey, Kathy?
Thank you. So, in, in our draft, I don't know how many of you have been through it, you'll see there is a significant reduction in the upfront-
Capital money.
Capital money that they gave us and in the prior contract. And then if you read through the, what was included in our packets for tonight from our attorneys, they're telling us that cable-related in-kind contributions, that is, non-monetary obligations of the cable license imposed by a cable operator, might, will now count towards the five percent franchise fee cap. So what that's saying is that, you know, you're saying, oh, can we raise it from three to five? It may not do any good because they may now decide that every cable drop that they've been giving us for free, value it in kind towards that percentage cap. That's what this is trying, what they're trying to do here, to the point where we would be strapped for funds to run our cable access, public access channel. And we never have been before, and that is, I think, a very serious consideration. And I agree with Tracy that we should be working together on budgetary matters here, especially in light of the fact that this could very negatively impact the amount of actual cash that we're given from this cable company to operate our cable access. And, and I think it is an important part of this town. Yes, people are moving to other modes of watching, but as we get more capable, we can stream it. Maybe we can get it onto their phones as well. But the first step is to record it in some manner, and that takes money. And that's where they're hitting us. That's where they're trying to hit us. And I, I guess I would suggest maybe we shouldn't discuss contract negotiations too much further because shouldn't they be an executive so that we have some, some foothold on this when, when it comes down to the, the mark of November when we have to actually agree to a contract? So we have time. But you're right, Ed, and on some, on some of those points given to us by the attorney, it's pretty significant.
It is.
It's pretty significant.
It's going to wipe out some public access.
You know, valuing these in-kind contributions when they're giving a monopoly service here is, you know, taking away from the people of Groveland.
It is, and everyone.
Okay, does anyone else have anything else on this matter?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
So moving on, we have the Conservation Commission request for temporary appointment.
Mike Dancy for Conservation. So we, right now, are currently short one member. And it looks like, because people are traveling, that we have a problem having a quorum this Wednesday and September eighteenth, two meetings. So I request that perhaps you'd consider appointing one of your board members as a temporary member of the, to fill those two meetings.
Does anyone want to step up to fulfill those meetings? When are the meetings?
Twenty-first.
The first one is August twenty-first, this Wednesday. And the next one is September eighteenth, which is a Wednesday, too.
I can't do the twenty-first. I don't know about the eighteenth.
I, I, I'm kind of in the same boat. I'm going to be done Mitchell College at, at New London, Connecticut on the twenty-first. But other than that, I'd be open to do any other date you have.
I can do the twenty-first. I can do either or. It just, you know, I just hope you can get your quorum after that because I won't know what's going on. But, you know-
Well, if you can do the twenty-first, I'll volunteer to do the other meetings until they can-
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth and into October if they can, until they get a quorum.
Oh, okay. If you'd like to do it that way, I'd be glad to do that.
I don't want to do that. I don't like to do it.
Well, you stepped up last time, too, Bill. That's what I was thinking.
Because things, people, things get done when people show up.
Yeah.
And if people don't show up, things don't get done. So if somebody has to step up so that things get done, I don't mind. Because that's what makes the ball roll.
Right.
So if you can take the twenty-first-
Sure.
I will accommodate you in September and October, and hopefully by then you, you have someone else.
It may not even take until September, but I just wanted to be prepared in case. I, I know, like I say, this Wednesday, we won't have a quorum without somebody. September, I don't know yet.
I just don't know when I'm going to be back from Connecticut, so if you could do the twenty-first.
I can do the twenty-first.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, you do.
Yeah. So, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that Selectmen-
Can you make a motion to appoint yourself?
I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion to appoint-
You're going to appoint her and then-
Yeah. I'm going to make a motion to appoint Selectmen Castranellis to fill the Conservation Committee? Commission vacancy for their Wednesday, August twenty-first meeting.
So like, it's a one-day appointment?
I'll second, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Now we've got to go the other way.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Bill O'Neil to the Conversation Commission's-
Conservation, not Conversation.
Conversation Committee is good.
I wish, that was a good one. I want to be on that one.
Commission's meeting for September eighteenth, is that right, Mike?
Yes.
And possibly, what's the October one? Or we'll do that one now, too?
Yeah, October, let me see.
The second, October, it would be-
The ninth?
The fourteenth. No, the fif- the fifteenth, correct? October fifteenth.
No, it's the sixteenth. It's a Wednesday.
October? The second Wednesday would be the ninth?
The ninth, that's what I said.
Oh, the second, I'm sorry. I'm on the third. I've mistaken. Apologize.
I'm looking at the calendar. And the ninth.
Okay.
Oh, and the-
Can I get a second?
I'll, I'll second that also.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
We're confused.
Will send me a reminder just so I, I'll write it down, but-
Oh, what time do you meet, Ed? Seven o'clock, in here? Okay.
She's going to kill me.
So moving on, vote to the board. We have accept the resignation of Cameron Santos as a library page effective August twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Do you want to do these individual, or do you want to do them all at once?
Yeah, I think we should, we, we need to do them all individually.
Okay.
Motion to accept the resignation of Cameron Santos, library page effective August twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Accept the resignation of Jack Bubalakwa from the Elm Square Committee. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion. We accept the resignation of Jack Bubalakwa from the Elm Square Committee.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Okay. Request to grant access to the Habels' emergency public safety vehicles to access the Habels' impending solar array via Yama Road. Does anyone know what that's about?
Yeah, they're building a solar panel up on the Habels' side of the dump, and they want to be able to get access from the Yama side.
We on the road.
They just let, they have to come in on the Groveland side to get to the Habels' side, so we're just going to give them access. So can I get a motion?
Motion to grant access to Habels' emergency and public safety vehicles to access to Habels' impending solar array via Yama Road.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, vote to appoint the Essex County Fire Chief Association as the municipal hearing officer under the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fourteen, eight A.
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Okay. A one-day liquor license for the Groveland Day 5K after-party on Friday, September sixth, two thousand nineteen, between the hours of six and nine. Detail officer is required. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion. All the paperwork looks to be in order.
Second? Any further discussion? Okay, so Selectmen's time in reports. I guess we'll start with Mike.
Close to Bill? I didn't sign one.
Yeah, I got nothing for Selectmen time.
Okay, Bill, Bill O'Neil?
We did have a meeting of the new high school, middle school building committee last Tuesday. Project is still moving ahead as scheduled. Will be, I think they call it the thirty percent next in October, and that's when the schematic design and the contractor get together with their two numbers, and they have to reconcile back to the number that was given to the three towns. That'll happen in October. Second phase will be in January, and the third will be next April. Other than that, we basically kind of looked at building materials and schematic designs and some artwork for what some of the interior features of the building will look like. That's still kind of an ongoing process. Again, we're looking to find the greatest value with the least expensive materials so that we don't want to build the Taj Mahal. We just want to build a very efficient and value structure. And that was basically it from our meetings. There'll be more to follow.
All right, so I guess I'll go. So to bring everyone up to speed, what's going on down the pines? The shed has been purchased. The well company has been hired. And we got the design in for the sprinkler system for the field, and we are moving forward with that. That's as far as the pines go. I would like to thank the light department last night for sending their crew out. The couple poles got hit up on Garrison in that end of town, and the lights were out. They were very swift to go out and take care of it and get the lights on within an hour and a half or so. So I'd like to thank them. Following up on Mike's cricket, I did talk with the cricket people, and we're proceeding with that. That should be in the next couple of weeks, something going on there. And I think that's pretty much it right now. I would like to, do you know if we ever heard back from the light, I mean, the water department in response to a letter that I asked Denise to do on getting into the buildings, or?
I don't, I haven't heard. I'll check with Denise and get back to you tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, to try and to view the, the buildings, to get moving on that.
I, I don't have anything.
Okay, Kathy?
Well, you know that I would, I'm still desiring to visit each and every one of our town buildings as a new select person. So I understand, you know, everyone's schedule's really busy. I don't mind doing it when I have time, when I can get in, provided I can get approved to get in the door. I don't have keys for these buildings. So it is important to me to be able to visually see these buildings. I also thought that we had agreed on a work session on September twenty-third. Is that still on our agenda? Working for it. I had that down in my notes, on the issue of record storage. And I think that, after speaking with the Secretary of State's office, it would be helpful perhaps to all the departments in this building to have a visit from a representative from the Secretary of State could do like a presentation on records that need to be preserved.
Sorry to interrupt you, but on September twenty-third, is that for the town manager?
Yes, that's what I thought it was. That's what I had my notes.
So the records have, the twenty-third work session was for the town manager?
Yes, and then moving on, the rec- this record storage issue still that I brought up to you before, that the Secretary of State office will come down and do like a PowerPoint to the town departments in this building to let them ask questions about record storage, about knowing what they need to store and for how long, and perhaps give them some information on how- on how, how to store things, maybe answer some of their questions and concerns, so that, you know, if at some point we decide that, we've talked about using off-site storage, I just, I would just pause before we start moving things off-site to find out what are we moving and why, and are we saving the things in a good enough form, or could we do a better job of it? To get some information from the state for our town departments.
So do we wanna continue looking at the buildings, or we don't wanna continue?
Oh, I wanna see the buildings, I'm just, I'm just not sure what the problem is right now, I don't understand the problem, so I'm just saying, is it that we're not supposed to go in these buildings, or, I mean, I've never had a problem touring buildings, I did this on the school board, I went and toured every school with the committee and was able to get in and see every building, I don't, I don't get what the problem is.
I thought the buildings in Groveland were carrying custody of the Selectmen, but come to find out, I guess, as a chairman, I can't ask for a key to go into buildings without having voted on as, from the board, so.
Oh, well, I'll make a motion that.
But I don't know if that was on the agenda, I don't know if we can do that, if it wasn't on the agenda, right?
It's.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, no, it's not on the agenda, and I, I don't think we can do it under Selectman's time, but the way I had looked at it is, we had basically leased that building out to the water department, and I, I look at it, if, if you were a landlord of a building, you, you don't have a right to go into an apartment just at, at will, you gotta give them some kind of a notice that you wanna go in, and, and I think that if we send them a letter and say that, at, before our next meeting, that we wanna go in both buildings, that that would suffice as far as the law goes.
And I thought that was taken care of last time, but maybe.
I thought that was done months ago.
Right. Can we reframe that letter then, Caitlin, to state that we're going to go into the buildings? So reframe it to state we are going to go into the buildings, and we're giving them notice that we will be going into the buildings before our next meeting?
Before our next meeting, okay.
You wanna give them a date, then?
Yeah, what's the date of the next meeting?
Uh, September 3rd.
Okay.
Tuesday, September 3rd.
Okay.
And then the, the other thing that's in our correspondence, the, no, I'm not looking at the thing, sorry, I've lost the page, the page that had to do with the property, 157 Main Street?
Yep.
Which was?
The light poles?
Nope. No, 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 no.
The Billis property.
I apologize.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Billis property, don't worry about it.
I, I am, I am interested in having us look at that, I'm interested in having us talk with the water and superintendent about that, if there's a possibility of a well there. I'm very interested in us not losing an opportunity on this property, as it, it completely borders the cemetery, which is a historic site, and potentially, it's a, it's a series of emails, that's why I couldn't find it.
But aren't they looking for like, hypothetically, like?
Well, I think with the first step.
1.9 million?
Well.
The first step, the first step in the process is to at least get clarification on what the property, here it is, it's these emails. I, I think that we should take time, at least to consider this and take a look at it, and not dismiss it out of hand, I certainly would like it on our next agenda.
To do what?
To have a discussion on it, you, it's in the court, it's not on our agenda.
I know it's in the correspondence, I'm reading it, but I'm trying to find out what you wanna have a discussion on.
Under the discussion about whether or not the town is interested in this property, and whether or not the water and sewer is interested in this property, whether or not the cemetery commission is interested in this property, what, are we interested in this property?
Okay.
Yes.
It, it certainly makes sense to explore that, and I'm not too crazy about the price that is listed here, 1.8 million, that seems to be.
It's a high price.
A little bit high. But, yeah, it'd be nice to see what the property is valued at, and move forward, and the cemetery, looking at one of the letters here in the correspondence, cemetery's getting maxed out and they'll need another site for, for a water station, so it certainly makes sense to explore that.
Okay.
Or maybe it's an agenda item, like Kathy suggested?
Well, I was trying to, okay, so we're on Selectman's time and report, so Kathy wants to have that put in as another, next meeting for another agenda item.
Yeah, provided we can get information, I don't wanna just be looking at this, this is like, not very much information.
The only thing we're gonna have to do is, we're gonna have to somehow ask the water department if they want it, we're gonna need to ask the cemetery if they want it, we're gonna have to have it on the agenda to discuss it anyway, so we're gonna have to.
Okay.
To even discuss it, we can't ask the people to do that without having them. I just don't know with the school coming on, and unless we're gonna find this money somewhere, I don't know how we can ask the town people to buy this for 1.9.
I hope for the next meeting, we invite the cemetery commissioners in and the water commissioners, and talk, and the water superintendent, and talk to them about it.
It's potentially a CPA, it's potentially fundable, and also from water.
But I, I do think that the 1.8 million is a little on the high side.
Right, I understand the person that wrote that just purchased it in August for quite a bit less than that, so.
Caitlin, did you get that, we're gonna invite the water and the cemetery people in for next meeting to, possibly the next meeting to discuss purchase in that land?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, back to, any other thing else on Selectman's time, Kathy?
Just that I've continued to look at that water and sewer property, where they used to be in that building on Washington Street, and the mill pond behind it, and it is, it is very overgrown and has a lot of debris. It, it would be good to put it on a future agenda, to see what it would take to clean that up and restore it to at least a park-like setting.
I think we first need to find out who, who is responsible, is the water department responsible for the cleanup, or are we responsible, because we can't even get into the building, never mind talk about cleaning up the land, so.
I know.
So we can figure that out.
Right, well.
They have, they have some of their stuff around them.
We vote that you'd be able to go over there with your tractor and clean it up?
Thanks.
Yeah, Bill.
You've got the cricket field to clean up, right?
It, it was a recreation area at one point, and it, it does have a fairly pretty body of water behind it.
I think we need to, I think we need to find out what the water is gonna let us do and not do there, because that's there.
No, we own that land, that's, the title of that land belongs with the town, it's ours, it's our problem, it's our responsibility.
So are we talking about the building or the land, the land was?
The land and the, we, we are on the deed, the town, I mean, however you wanna look at it.
But we can't even get them to let us enter the building.
I know.
I don't understand how we can go start cleaning something up or even talk about it, 'cause they have trucks there, they have all kinds of stuff there.
I'm just, okay, so.
That's all I'm saying, I don't know, I'm confused about what takes place.
Okay, well, I think what you're saying, and, and it makes sense, the first step is, let's go look at the building, so then maybe if you could just.
Do a walk-around that night, too?
Put it in the back of your mind that we could think about restoring this to at least a park.
I would love to get them, they had told me months ago that they were gonna clean up, they were gonna be out of that building, they were gonna move down to the new building, and it's still there, everything's still there, and we can't even get them to answer us back, so, go ahead.
There has, there has been some cleanup efforts down there, it, it looks a heck of a lot better than it did.
Recently?
I was just there last week, I didn't see a change, there's still an old truck and.
Yeah, I don't know.
Whatever. It would just be nice to, I think that it would be a very pretty spot to restore.
So moving on, we have older unfinished business, we'll start with Kathy.
I think, I always bring up my old business when I shouldn't, sorry.
I don't have anything.
I'm good. Bill?
In regards to this letter from former water and sewer superintendent, I'd like to see an agenda item on, on this item regarding unauthorized purchases, like that.
All right. Caitlin, can you put that on?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if Mr. Cusack will be available anymore, I don't imagine he would, so we might wanna ask the, if the Board of Water would.
The water sewer commissioners?
Yes.
I think, I think there's been a letter sent to them.
I do not know.
I, I think I had a conversation, there's been a letter sent.
But they may be the only ones that can speak to this at this point now, where Mr. Cusack is gone.
So do you wanna have the board members come in and talk about it?
Yes, they would be so willing, that would be.
Okay, so, Ed, have the board members come in and talk about the letter? Go ahead.
Yeah, the letter was CC to the water commissioners, in addition to the board of Selectmen, so they're, they are aware of it.
I thought that it was thrown back into the finance director's hands.
What was?
That letter was thrown back into her hands to collect the money, that's the way I understood it.
Well, she sent a letter asking him to pay it.
I think she did.
Yes, she did, it's in our packet.
I imagine it is, my questions, I, I guess revolve around.
Why did it happen?
How did it happen? Where's the supervision? Who signs off on that? Do we need a full-blown audit on that?
Okay, so, we'll just have the commissioners come in, Ian, the way we have it set up, Caitlin?
We're good.
No, nothing else, sir.
Mike?
Yeah, I think the letter you're referring to was for a marginal sum, I think you're referring to something else, aren't you?
I don't know what I'm referring to until I start asking the questions, Mr. Selectman would, but then I would like to.
I had asked several meetings back, and it's not a priority, I guess, 'cause we got a lot of other things to come up, but I did wanna have a discussion on CPA at some point.
Yes.
Okay.
I agree.
I know we got a bunch of things being thrown onto the next couple agendas, but just a reminder that, that was asked of two or three meetings ago.
CPA discussion?
Right, the discussion would be like on the percentage that we're collecting now, whether or not we wanna continue with that surcharge on the tax rate, whether you wanna bring forward to the town.
You looking for that for the next meeting?
Whenever we can fit in, I gotta go over with Denise and see what we have and what we can fit in. I, I don't know the, we give all the ideas now, and then we gotta sort through it and figure out what we can get in. Are you good with that, Ed?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was just wondering whether.
Anything else, Mike?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, so moving on, other items not responsible anticipated at this time of posting, anyone?
Uh, no.
Okay, and then we move to finance director's time?
Well, Caitlin?
There's something.